All right, ready? All right, the board is back in open session. Welcome, everyone. I see there's lots of community members and teachers and administrators here. We have a very full agenda tonight, very interesting agenda. So, welcome, everyone. The first item is we have a welcome from Hollywood Principal Kim Heffner.
Happy Wednesday, and thank you so much for, first of all, for coming out to Hollywood. We love it when you come through our doors. We love to welcome the community in. Tonight is a special evening for us and for you as well. My dad was a school board member, and when he described the work to me, he always said it was thankless. He said it was a thankless job. Well, tonight's our opportunity to say thank you. I know, we know, that you give up your time away from your own families to come help us support the children of District 96, and we want to say thank you for that. The last four years, the district has undergone huge changes, enormous changes, and you have been in support of that. These outlined, the changes have been outlined in the strategic plan that you helped create, and you revise it, and you guys have been there for that. Thank you. The strategic plan is focused around the whole child. Thank you. We talk about every child every day. Thank you. Thank you for your commitment to the whole one of each of our children. Thank you for knowing that the value of your work and our work here is unquantifiable. You have been working tirelessly at a thankless job many times. Sometimes it may seem, for instance during the negotiating of the contract, that it may never end, this tireless and thank you work. Well, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but in an era of continuous improvement, it won't. It won't be done. We're going to keep at it because that's the work we do. We are working for society, we're working for our children, and you are supporting us, you are helping make decisions that help make the world a better place and create better lives for the children of District 96. So on behalf of the staff of District 96, the families of District 96, the children of District 96, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Heffner. I think I can speak for the board in saying that we're very lucky to be elected in a community that's so supportive of education and have such great educators, you know, to, you know, to, they're teaching our children. So I don't think this is a, speaking for myself, it's not really a burden at all, actually. I'm sure in some districts it might be, but fortunately, we're not one of them. So, next item is, we have public comment. So, I see there are a few people here that have signed up, so please forgive me if I mispronounce your name. First is Rebecca Rousseau. If you could just come up to the microphone and state your name and address, and if you're representing yourself or a group, just mention that, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Rebecca Rousseau. I am a LaGrange Park resident, actually in District 102. I'm a retired principal from District 102, educator in 102 for over 25, 28 years. My daughter and family live in Brookfield and will, are District 96 residents, but tonight I'm representing the League of Women Voters. I have a letter, which you all have, and I always hate reading things to people when they've got something they can read, but for the audience's benefit, I will read this. "I have been authorized to make the following statements on behalf of the co-presidents of the League of Women Voters of the LaGrange area with members residing in the School District 96 and under the auspices of the League of Women Voters of Illinois. We urge you to instruct your delegate to the Illinois Association of School Boards Conference in November to vote no on Resolution 2. The resolution provides firearms and training to teachers and staff. If this resolution passes, the IASB will actively seek sponsors and advocates for legislation to arm teachers and school staff. We would like to consider some alternative, more positive ways to address this issue that can provide support as well as safety for students. For example, support legislation that would fund school resource officers in all schools in Illinois. The officer works in collaboration with school and community as a resource for safety and security issues and can actively involve in a threat assessment team that identifies high-risk students and channels them for appropriate treatment. Or, if costs are prohibitive factor, then consider supporting legislation that would fund metal detectors in all schools in Illinois, an approach that is far safer than the introduction of firearms, which can contribute to accidental deaths. Thank you for your consideration. Mary Klonowski and Patricia Rocco, co-presidents, League of Women Voters, LaGrange area." And then we included a fact sheet with some information. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rousseau. Thank you. Next, we have, I can't quite make out the last name, but Ashley, Ashley.
My daughter's Ashley.
Oh, come, is she speaking as well, or? Oh, and she's not? Oh, okay. Thank you. And now we have Jen Ullman.
Hi, thanks. I was afraid maybe mine you couldn't see because I would definitely scribble. I'm Jen Ullman. I am one of the REC co-presidents, and I wanted to talk tonight about two things. First, thanking all of us for all of our work on the, you know, contract negotiations. We worked for many months, and we completed negotiations this past month. On October 25th, the REC voted to ratify the contract, and so we're looking forward to the discussion tonight and looking forward to hear what you have to say. The other thing I wanted to comment about is also the Illinois Association of School Boards Resolution about student safety. The REC is opposed to training teachers to be armed in school. We're so grateful for our social workers and our school psychologists, the positive behavior support systems that we have in place, and we feel that is very important and very beneficial to us. We are opposed to the resolution. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this point?
My name is Nelson Sweetser, and I have a son at Ames, and ironically, he's in Ms. Ullman's class, so this is a perfect kind of segue. But as many, I'm also here to talk about Resolution 2 from the IASB. And as many of you recall, I emailed each of you a few weeks ago, and my concern with this resolution is if passed, the board or future D-96 boards could move to arm teachers and other staff at our schools. I'd like to just review a few key points regarding why I'm steadfastly opposed to this resolution. The American Federation of Teachers, the National Education Association, and the National Association of Resource Officers strongly oppose arming teachers and school staff. Number two, arming teachers ignores research that the presence of a gun increases risks to children, both unintentional and intentional. Number three, arming teachers is not an effective way to stop active shooters. In 250 active shooter incidents, the FBI determined there were only seven successful armed civilian interventions. In contrast, unarmed civilians successfully intervened in 22 incidents. Also, civilians, even those trained and licensed, lack the skills of law enforcement to handle the chaos, high stress, and fluid nature of an active shooter incident. Four, arming teachers would burden schools with increased cost for insurance and training. And five, supporting the IASB resolution on the grounds of local control ignores the reality that passage of the resolution will have long-lasting implications to educational policy in Illinois. Supporting the ISB resolution in deference to rural districts ignores the research that the presence of guns increases risks to children and that these risks outweigh any benefits. I understand the board plans to discuss this a little bit tonight, and so as part of that discussion, I'm requesting that you agree to send a representative to the IASB meetings and vote no on Resolution 2. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Sweetser. Do we have any other public comment on this or any other topic? Then if not, we will move on to the changes to the agenda. Does any board member have any proposed changes to the agenda? If not, because this is a special meeting, we have the meeting sort of in two parts. We have a short part at the beginning where we're going to vote on five different motions, and then we're going to turn this over to the committee, the regular committee of the whole meeting. So, the first motion is the, as Ms. Ullman mentioned earlier, was the new contract between the district and the Riverside Educational Council. So at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 2018-2021 agreement between the Riverside Education Council and the board as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion at this, at this point, on this contract? I'd just like to say a couple of things. As Ms. Ullman said, it was a lengthy process, but I thought it was a very good, fair, and respectful process. And the board's goal, the board had basically two goals, and one was to strike a deal which was fair to the, fair to the teachers and the staff. We recognize that our staff are highly trained, highly educated. Professional staff is our biggest asset, and so we wanted, we needed to find an agreement which would be fair to the teachers and competitive with districts around us. And then the other goal is obviously we want to do that in such a way that it's financially sustainable by the community over the long haul. So those are the two goals, and I feel like the contract that we negotiate with the teachers meets those goals. So, I don't know if Rich or Martha, you had anything to add to that?
No, I just wanted to add that I'm grateful that the teachers ratified the contract. I think each group had their own set of goals walking into this process, and I think it was probably pretty clear amongst both groups that we didn't meet all of our goals. But we really worked to find that common ground, and we found that common ground, and that's what I'm grateful for.
And thank you. So Jeff Miller and Rich Regan, also in the tireless board work, spent many, many hours, many days, so thank you, and thank you to the REC team. So I would really just echo everything that's already been said in the room tonight, that it was a lengthy process, it was an important process. I think we had a lot of really great discussions, and I think we've come to a really good agreement as we move forward.
Are there any other board member comments on this agreement, questions?
I do just want to echo what Martha just said. Thank you to the board members who took a lot of time, to the teachers and staff who were on the committee, the administrators. I know how much time you guys spent, and I really appreciate it. I'm glad that it's a collaborative, thoughtful process that works out for everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, you're our most important resource, and it's very important that we support the teachers, and so I'm here to educate, so thank you for your time.
Any other comments? Then if not, Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Martha, when is the contract, when will the contract be posted on the website for people to see?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, in preparation, we've been getting ready, so, yeah.
All right, good. Next item is a resolution to purchase property. So at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution to purchase the property located at 3340 Harlem Avenue as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Martha, would you like to tell, to explain to the community what exactly this purchase involves and what the motivations are behind it?
Sure. So, as I think everybody knows, we have a long-range facility plan, and even before we had the specific long-range facility plan with DLA architects, I know when I started here in summer of 2016, already in the strategic plan, there were goals around facilities. And one of the goals was to consider a district office relocation in order to create space, necessary space for students at Central and/or Hauser. So if people know where the current district office is, it's located kind of right there in between Central and Hauser. So, the idea of the district office moving into this 3340 South Harlem building is really with the goal to create space for the students. We've talked to our architect fairly significantly, and we know that whether it's to add on space or to renovate space, it's an expensive thing to do, and that really our just moving out is probably one of the more cost-effective ways to manage the renovation and needed student spaces at Central and at Hauser. So, as we are looking, beginning to look at sort of conceptual design ideas, we are looking at how a vacant district office, meaning the space in between Central and Hauser, really could become student learning spaces. Where it sort of looks right now that it's probably space for central school students, which then also alleviates though some of the people are at Central and Hauser, you know that we share a lunchroom, and perhaps not sharing a lunchroom would also create some scheduling benefits for the students at Hauser. So we, we just see it as a way to really benefit students, and also for our district office. So if people are familiar with the district office location, we have staff that are working what we call kind of the tower, the third floor, and we have staff that work in the garden level there. So, I also just look forward to the opportunity to kind of create more opportunities for the district office to work together in kind of the full conceptual idea of how I see a district office functioning at its best. So there's, really, I see just many positives, and it has been a process to consider buildings within. We obviously want to stay within District 96. There's not a lot of property available right here in the footprint of District 96 in a way that felt accessible to the community, so we know that the community comes, and particularly around registration and residency. And if you're starting a three-year-old and early learners, there are certainly times where the public interacts directly in the district office. So, this particular building is right at Harlem and Quincy. So, if you look at the sort of entrance along Quincy, it feels enough like it's part of the community. It feels a bit, you know, business industrial on Harlem. It's right next to the train tracks, yeah.
Right next to the train tracks.
Yeah. So, so those are the...
And the square footage was?
Seven thousand, seven thousand plus.
And the purchase price?
Six hundred thousand, yes, thank you. And we also think that we could, with that space, so there's a little more space than probably we need in terms of exact office footprint, that we can create a professional development, professional learning space. So also, when we do workshops with our teachers, when we do it during the school day, we tend to have to move somebody out of a library or out of another space, so we also think we can create some nice meeting space for our, for our staff also.
Do the, either the facilities advisory members have anything they'd like to add to what Martha said on the purchase, or?
Sure. You know, as Martha mentioned about the facility advise, advisory plan, when we did that space study, we knew that we're crunched in every school, and those of you in our community, you see that, you talk to your kids about it. So this move right here to take, to take the district offices out of Central has an immediate and positive impact on this. We're freeing up more than 3,000 square feet in, in the central footprint that's immediately available for student spaces. And for that reason alone, I think it's really important to make this move. Rich, I think one thing to mention, too, is that as the architect looked at various plans, he saw what the cost of building space is. And honestly, although I had my doubts initially, it is more effective to purchase this building than to build new, and it comes with the benefit that we're still staying within the district. We don't have problems that happened 10 years ago, and we're also opening up Central to maybe meeting some additional access issues when people are injured or sick. So there's a lot of gains to our students, and the administration still stays very accessible and close.
Am I right in thinking that the new space has a lot more adequate parking for those that are visiting?
Yes.
Because it's a struggle to park, to get into the district office. I walk by there every day, and this, this property, I think, is a lot easier way to get in there, so hoping that'll be nice for everyone.
And I'll just, like, that was really one of our goals, is there a sort of ready-to-use office space that has parking in Riverside? And we found this building, we think it really fits those, fits all of those.
Essentially, it's moving ready, that's furnished, you don't have to do anything, basically, no, no binding of furniture, it's all done with.
The first property that came up, we were looking at a lot of properties in Riverside, so this one seemed to fit the bill ideally.
Given the cost of leasing options that we were seeing as well, that the idea of purchasing this property, something that the district owns, you know, one-time expense and that's over, that's not something we're having to re-up year after year without any equity to show for it.
Any other comments, though? If not, then Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the non-union salary recommendations. So, these are the staff that are not part of the union, for example, the central office staff. And so these are the salary recommendations for next year. So at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the non-union salary recommendations for 2018-2019 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on these salary recommendations? The only thing I would note is that the raises vary somewhat from person to person, but the aggregate raise is as 3%, just under 3% basically. So, if there's no further comments, then Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the district goals for this school year. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the district goals for 2018-2019 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We've talked about these several times now at meetings. Does any board member have any, or Martha, have any, any further comments on these goals or any further points they'd like to make?
No, just thank you for bringing up the same thing.
Great. You know, you can nuance for others, but it was, it was good.
So if no further comments, then Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the General PTAB Resolution for 2017 through 2019. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the General PTAB Resolution for 2017-2019 for Riverside School District 96 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Martha, would you or Mr. Fitten like to explain exactly what this is for the community?
This is a resolution that authorizes our attorneys to intervene in the proceedings at the Property Tax Appeal Board. So it, this agreement updates the agreement we already have, but it now includes textures 2017, 2018, and 2019. We recently received notice of some appeals that could require refunds of $190,000. So, the attorneys will advocate for us that that number would be much smaller. And based on the appeals for, in 2017, we would expect more in 2018 from the same taxpayers. So, yes.
Do you know what the usual end result of the appeals ends up being? Do the appealing parties get half, or three-quarters, or all, or any idea? And if you don't, that's...
I don't.
Okay.
I, I would guess that it, it's better for the district to have someone at the Appeals Board advocating, making an argument that the taxes shouldn't be reduced, and an attorney that can do the research and maybe get comparable properties and make a good argument on our side. I think it would help us in the...
Is only beneficial to us. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Fitten?
I have a question. How do we decide what properties to fight? I mean, because there's, I know there's a number, I mean, is there a threshold? I mean... That you're looking at for when this is an intervene? A number?
They'll do it whenever again on the schedule. They'll actively make sure that they're aware of what's coming up, same with the...
You might want to ask your question. I don't know.
Yeah. I guess, is there a, is there a threshold that decides whether or not we can test an appeal? So is it like, is it like a $100,000 reduction, or is it like a $2,500 reduction? I mean, what, is there a threshold?
Attorneys would make a decision on each one as they come up. If there's not, if there's not enough money to be saved by spending their time on it, they, they might ignore some of the smaller ones and only intervene on the bigger dollar appeals.
But these are commercial property appeals, right?
The ones I saw, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for putting that out.
And these are, we compensate the attorneys on their hourly rate? There isn't any type of added incentive to doing this appeal, right?
It's on the regular fees.
Okay.
And it's split amongst the shared, the districts that share?
Right, so then we're in a cooperative, so the other district, taxing districts that are in the cooperative would share the costs.
So that's the other properties, is RB, and who else is in, is it called RB?
The library and the village.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Fitten? If not, thank you, Ms. Fitten. Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So that's the special part of the meeting, the committee meetings. The first committee meeting is, first committee is the Policy Committee. Dan?
Okay. Well, the, under the Policy Committee tonight is the IASB resolutions that have been mentioned earlier. These are not necessarily policies per se, but I guess it's kind of the closest way to fit it into our agenda here. There are eight resolutions total, of which the public interest seems to have coalesced around issue number two. Let's, Margie, would you, or, sorry, Martha, would you like to...
So in particular, the student safety resolution that was mentioned earlier in public comment is the one that has certainly gathered the, the public attention, and Dave Barsadi is our IASB representative and is planning to attend the delegate assembly. So this is really an opportunity for the board to, to discuss, you know, thoughts and opinions around this and to, by way of consensus, to indicate to David our position, your position relates to the District 96 Board of Education.
I'll start. I would like us to vote no. I gleaned a lot, what we heard in public comment, I certainly don't think adding a gun in a classroom is, is any way to handle the situation. I know that the way that they, you know, position it is to talk about local control, and while I certainly, generally in favor of local control from, you know, there's a, across the state of Illinois, there's a lot different from one district to the other. However, this is a situation where I personally do not support that. So I would like us to vote no this resolution.
I'm going to echo Linda's comments here. I just can't imagine a situation where I would support something like this, that there's, you know, if we had safety issues, there's so many other steps that we would take before we, we would try and put guns in teachers' hands.
I totally agree with that, and I think that our educators are professionals, they have expertise in mathematics and English and early child development. It is not their duty to put a gun in their hand, and to give them that psychological responsibility as well. They need to focus on their work, and there's no way I would support that. I don't think it's good for the children either, so.
I think just in the bigger picture sense, it's not, it should not be the duty of IASB to be advocating for a position that is so contentious, because clearly, we have good evidence that it's not a good idea. Obviously, some people do, but in this, IASB should only be advocating things that have consensus across the vast, vast majority of districts, and this does not.
I think it's important, I think it's important to point out, there are some districts that, southern school districts that have advocated for this. I personally am against it as well. Seems like the consensus is board. I mean, there is no, I'm surprised they're putting this in there because there's no, there's no study that's like shows that this is actually effective. I mean, it's, it's a visceral reaction, saying that a good guy with a gun always wins out with a backup gun. And we know that works in Hollywood, doesn't work in real life. And so, I'm more than happy to go down, or to Chicago and vote. Not down in San Jose.
I agree with that.
As been said on the board and by the commentators, this is, I think, an unwise idea, a very unwise approach, and I would also recommend that we vote against it.
Well, again, and I would echo what's been said so far as well. My understanding of the resolution is, should it have passed, should it pass, is for the IASB to lobby on behalf of getting such a law passed, even if it were to get to that step. I can't imagine such a law... I can't imagine such a law even coming close to passing. It just seems like the IASB has much better things to do with its time than something like this.
So I think we have consensus.
I think we have consensus. I guess that there are, as Dan mentioned, there are eight other resolutions out there. Do we want to talk about any of those or do we want to, seeing that I'm down there or out there?
Are there any that are of particular interest to the board that someone feels like we should be talking about or...
The seven, number seven and number eight, the amended belief statements. While I don't believe they're resolutions, they're just belief statements of the IASB. I certainly support those. One is talking about making, adding in the belief statements about access to mental health services for children, right? And then the other one is encouraging like suitor voter registration. I certainly would vote yes on those. The remaining five, I don't have any issue with personally. I'm not sure. They're not very interesting topics, to be quite honest. So if there's any...
Just wondering, in regards to student voter registration, have we ever had anyone register at house?
No.
They'd be too young.
No, but it's just, it's a belief statement of the IASB. So it's just adding that it's an important, I mean, that's why I'm saying I support it. It has nothing to do with District 96. Generally don't have students who are voters of age, so.
Dave, do you feel well instructed? I'm instructed. All right, I think also in the agenda, we listed the safety policy. I think Martha, you wanted to say something along those lines as well?
Sure. I know we had some parents reach out and community members reach out to us and ask what policies and procedures we have in place. And, you know, we have one sort of broad scope policy that really talks about safety and security and speaks to school safety drills and crisis response, instruction, even bus riding and bus riding evacuations, which interestingly we do every year, having AEDs in the schools, et cetera, et cetera. So that policy is available for people to review, but I think as many of you have already and both our parents and teachers and board members have commented also, that we know that school safety goes far beyond just having the secure doors. And I will say, we are looking at, continue to look at enhancements in that area. But it really is, it's our practices in addition to the policies that are broad in scope and that our students, as you know, do practice, obviously, for fire drills. They do practice for an intruder drill. And I know we read about how it's unfortunate that we sort of live in a time when that's something children have to practice in school. It is a reality that children do practice that in school. They practice it here in District 96. But I think it was, Jen, I think you said it right, that we also have tremendous mental health services. We have wonderful social workers and psychologists that this board has supported and really have a comprehensive social, emotional learning curriculum that is offered through our teachers and really this idea of a positive climate and culture that really supports the students' well-being. A lot of what we know about school tragedies is it's often disenfranchised children or troubling situations. So again, I just really want to applaud all our school leaders and our teachers that I think do so much to just keep that close and careful eye on all of our students, both from kind of that physical safety, but very much as well from that social, emotional safety as well. So again, I just feel like we have a lot of services, a lot of programs. It's embedded in our curriculum. It's embedded in health curriculum. It is just embedded in the professional development and learning that our staff do. And again, I guess it's unfortunate that it's something we do think about, but it's something that I also feel that we think about and our staff really turns very much to that student-centered way of continuing to problem solve that and really reach out and make sure that children are feeling included and connected and that they really do have these trusted adults here in the building. So I want to thank them for all of that. And again, always an opportunity to thank all of you for the support that you provide so that we can provide these supports and services to the students in the district.
Did you also, I'm not sure if you mentioned this, about the cooperation with the local police departments?
Yeah. So I can talk about, so we have a memorandum of understanding that really defines communication with both Riverside and Brookfield Police Departments. And again, that's as much designed around that relationship and prevention and again, having an understanding if there are families in crisis or students in crisis. And that's whether we need their support or they need our support as the educator. So that is another piece of the puzzle. I feel like there's so many layers to all of it being about, I know I've talked about this before, that we're going to hear tonight about student achievement. That's the most important thing. Actually, student safety comes before student achievement. If children aren't safe here in school, we can't begin to instruct them and have them achieving at high levels. So safety is kind of the ground floor to getting to the achievement piece.
I think that's it for the Policy Committee.
Stan?
Next up is Finance.
All right.
Rich?
So we've got a couple items on our agenda here. One is the Facility Advisory Committee meeting update. We had our last meeting as the Facility Advisory Committee on Thursday, November 1st in the afternoon. We met for a few hours. Our agenda is posted there. I just want to highlight a couple of items that we discussed. With respect to recent facility updates, we talked more in detail about the district office considerations, which we voted on earlier in the agenda here, moving the district office offsite, and then talked specifically about how we would perhaps use most of that space that's going to be vacated. So there were some interesting ideas that came up there. We talked about separating play and parking and specifically talked about a consultant that could better advise us on exactly how to do that. Many community members here tonight, I'm certain that everybody's very aware of the huge traffic issues that happen around the schools, both early in the morning and in the afternoon, and how we all try and avoid it, but sometimes it's unavoidable. We're very concerned about the safety that surrounds that, just kids on bikes and kids walking home and traffic moving in eight different directions. So we're going to be supporting a measure to bring a consultant in that can help advise us on exactly how to do that in some of our most problematic locations.
Yeah, but the consultants will help us look at the Central Hauser Campus, looking at the actual space that we have and how it's used, because right now, if you go there at 7:45, you see cars, you see kids, there's no clear path of anything. So I think it's going to be well worth our time and our energy to try to resolve that and make sure that kids are where kids should be and cars are where cars should be and that we don't have...
And we do a lot of that with staff, you know, staff supervision and carefully directing children one way and not the other way, and bikes one way and not the other way and cars. But we do believe that there are some structural ways that we could consider that whole space that would just make that much clearer. And if that means whether it's physical barriers or just kind of more logistical barriers, we think that, there have been traffic studies done kind of around how the traffic flows around the schools, really on the village streets. But our interest now, we're really turning towards sort of our internal parking lots and play spaces to see how we can, you know, potentially just reconfigure things so that all of that is much clearer and we think therefore safer.
Adding on to what you were saying we were talking about, I think we spent probably the first hour and a half reviewing new designs for Ames. Not all new, but like refining the designs. The architect, I shouldn't say we, because I didn't come up with them, the architect has come up with a lot of more options so that we will have some choices. And I think from where I sit on the committee, it feels like we're in a really good spot. We have, hopefully, well, in December, we will be bringing some more options forward and just want to let you know that we talked about Ames for a very long time.
We did. And if I may add to that, it's a situation where we are coalescing around some very, around some plans that are going to solve a lot of problems and I'm excited about them and we're anxious to put those before the community here and we're very close to doing that. You know, so that, you know, that was the lion's share of the meeting, is talking specifically about those plans. And what I'm most excited about is that they don't, while they address issues that we have at Ames, they impact the district as a whole if we do them the right way. So that's what I'm excited about. So another item that we discussed here was construction management and project management. And this is a topic that many of us on the board have advocated as we've gotten deeper into our facilities discussion. And, you know, personally, it's something that I advocate and that we find a professional that can represent the board and the administration throughout the construction process, from bidding to the RFP process to everything from project completion in a safe and prescribed way. So we'll be bringing that measure before the board here soon as well. Is there anything else that we missed here?
No, that's about where we...
That's about it. We're meeting again next week.
Next week again. So the second item on our agenda here is...
Wait, one second. Were there any questions about the Facility Advisory Committee? Just want to make sure that any board members have any options to, and thank you, yeah, and thank you for the feedback. Some board members sent us some feedback and we were able to share that at the committee as well, so incorporating that. So again, if anything else comes up, please don't hesitate to call either of us or text either of us or call or email or whatever, because definitely having everybody's thoughts at the table is incredibly helpful to get this moving.
All right. Thank you for your efforts on this, because I know this is not an easy task, but I do appreciate the fact that you're looking out for somebody to represent our interests, the board, the districts, the administrators, because so oftentimes that doesn't happen.
And if it's done effectively, it's actually saving money.
Right.
So that's what we're looking forward to.
Yeah.
Good. Actually, I should expand on that a little bit. Martha and Mr. Fitten have interviewed several firms and we think we've arrived at one of them, so that'll be in the proposal. All right.
Jim, do you want to comment and share a little bit more about that?
Would you like to? Yeah, if you want to.
We've received three referrals, company executive construction, Inc., Vistara, and CBRE. So Superintendent and I met with each of them and made sure we could get a referral for, that they've done work in schools before, find out how they charge for their services, try and get a feel for what's unique about each of these companies. And after those three meetings, we both agreed that Vistara would be the one we'd want to recommend. In the middle of checking a school reference on them, it was a reference they gave us. But in the meantime, I received several unsolicited references from employees at 96 because we've worked with Vistara in the past and people stopping me and saying, this is the one you want. So that was nice to hear.
Don't go anywhere, Jim.
Okay.
So the next, unless there are any questions about what Jim shared with us here. Our next item is the tax year 2018 levy update.
All right. So the report you have, the estimated 2018 tax year levy, it's been updated since last month. I met with the tax assessor in the meantime and got more refined, better estimates for EAV and new property. It didn't make a big change to what we're levying for. I think when I use the assessor's numbers, it brought our proposed levy down $4,200 out of the $25 million. The next steps are, we'll need to publish a notice about the 2.6% property tax increase and that we'll be having a hearing on December 19th. And then at the board meeting on December 19th, we'll have a hearing and then hopefully approve the levy. And I've got to file it by the last Tuesday in December.
I have a question for you. So in about a month's time, the assessor really reduced their new property estimate to you. Did she, do you have an explanation?
So the first estimate was mine.
Oh, that was your estimate?
Based on rougher calculations from history. And then the assessor who looks at these things every day gave me a more precise number, lowered the new property and had a list of the addresses, so.
Got it.
Where I was using an average.
Okay, that makes sense. Any other questions from Mr. Fitten on this?
I'll make just one comment, that I know you've added some things into the report, like the summary of updates. Very helpful.
Great.
Yes. And the history, like everything's at my fingertips right now, so it's, thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm always open for more suggestions, too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, over to you, Sharon.
Okay, Education Committee, it's that time of year where we talk about student achievement data. It's in, and so we have some slides from Ms. Brownlow about our park results and also about the state report card designations for each school.
Thank you, Mrs. Kleiber. So yes, tonight we will look very comprehensively at our student achievement and we will, we will talk about the school report card and the new state designations and the way they're viewing those, but we will go beyond that and talk about district-wide achievement and look at some other measures comprehensively as well as talk about our whole child approach to what we're doing in District 96. So with the gratitude that has come this evening to all of you, we're also grateful for the large curricular purchases that have been made over the last four years that I have been here, because I think you will see the results of some of those adoptions here tonight and the data. And so without your support in those expenditures, I don't know that we would have been able to make the gains that we've had in the amount of time that we have done so. So I'm excited to share. I always start with our demographic profile of the district just to highlight that. Couple of things on this slide that I want to talk about is, we're slightly down in percentage of low income for the 2017, 2018 school year. However, as we look forward where we currently sit for 2018, 19, we are up to 21% this year. So I do want to highlight that because I don't want it to be a shock next year when you see the same slide and it's up 6%. Also, the other thing I wanted to highlight on this slide was the chronic absenteeism box in the lower right corner. That is a new metric that is factored now into our school designation. So the threshold at the state level is 10% for absenteeism and it doesn't matter what the excuse is, whether the child is sick on vacation or just not in school for an unexcused absence. All absences are being calculated now and that threshold from the state is at 10%. So if we cross that threshold of 10%, then we get penalized in terms of our report card data. So that's just something to pay attention to. I had a little guilt about pulling my own children out of school for something this year after I read about that. But, you know, things happen and we don't want sick children coming to school, so please don't take that metric and think we want you to send them with strep throat. That's not the idea. But it is something to just pay attention to. So we're going to start our portfolio by looking at some of our state assessment data. Much like I took you through last year, we're going to start with the park assessment. I will also dispel the rumor that park is going away. There is an Illinois assessment of readiness, so your new acronym is now IAR instead of P-A-R-C-C. The Item Bank will remain exactly the same. So the platform will change because Pearson owned the park platform and now a company called Data Recognition Corporation owns the platform. So the way the items appear to students might look different and might change, the actual content of the questions will remain the same. The scaled scoring will remain the same. So as I present this data tonight, the scale metrics will look exactly the same next year. So there are five levels of performance. Those ranges of scaled scores, you saw this last year as well, and we get assessed in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. So this is my, opening of my show. We had a huge jump in overall percentages of students meeting and exceeding in both EL and Mathematics, so this is a combined slide. And again, I spoke to core curriculum, these amazing teachers who are working really hard, the support that the administrators are providing in their buildings. You see a very large jump, whereas the state remained overall pretty flat. I've had people ask me about that and I keep pointing to the hard work that we've been doing over the last four years. So it's pretty exciting to finally see that starting to happen. I remember two years ago when we first started this process and even three years ago when I did my first presentation and some board members were asking, when do you think you will see it? And I said, give me a few years. And now we're starting to see it, so I'm super excited. So Mathematics, overall, you see the trends. I will point out, and I keep pointing out, that the 2015 park assessment was a very different assessment. So I keep the data up there, but it was not the same format that we've experienced in 2016, 17, and 18. So... So, 16, 17, and 18 are pretty comparable. In Mathematics, you see our average scaled score across all students has risen, and the percentage of meets and exceeds has also risen. We did have 27 refusals. I will tell you that if our refusal rate ends up higher than 5% of our population, they will calculate our data against total students that were considered able to test, rather than students actually tested. So, if your refusal rate goes beyond the 5% threshold, those students that don't test could count against a district. In our case, that did not happen, because we didn't have enough of students refusing. However, in a district down the road where they have large percentages of students refusing, it did impact their proficiency metrics, because they count those metrics even if the student did not test.
Does it explain why they made that choice?
Because, yes, the state response to that question was, of course, I asked it, was, "Well, we don't know how they would have done, so we have to assume they would not be proficient if they were refusing the test." So, that was the answer. So, subgroup data, two subgroups that are reported out on our school report cards are Hispanic students. That doesn't mean our English learning students. That just means our students that are reported racially and ethnically as Hispanic, and then our low-income students. So, this metric, you can see, again, our subpopulations, our subgroup populations, percentages of students meeting and exceeding are getting better. In Mathematics, this is still an area of growth for us. We're still 3% above the state gap. So, the state runs at about a 30% gap between these two subgroups and all students, and we're running at about a 33% gap. So, I still would like to see this number get better. We are doing some targeted interventions and working with these two subgroup populations within our districts. So, I expect to see that that will improve. You'll see a different scenario in English Language Arts where we've made a little bit more progress in the subgroup area. So, moving on to English Language Arts, another big jump, it's...we've had the English Language Arts curriculum one...only one year. This is our second full year of implementation, but you see a huge jump. And it's a lot easier to jump in the English Language Arts area than it is in Mathematics, where you're filling specific discrete skill gaps. In the English Language Arts, we're putting richer text in front of our students, and we're doing a lot more writing and a lot more responding to text. So, it's easier to close that gap a little bit more quickly once you get rich resources into the classroom. So, you see a bigger jump here, 11% more students meeting and exceeding, and again, a scaled score that has risen. Our subgroup performance also made a huge jump. And now, we used to be at or above the state gap, we're now below the state gap. So, we're 3% to 5% below the state gap in these two subgroups. So, we've made huge strides in the subgroup demographic performance. So, happy about that as well. Moving on, any questions about that data so far? Because there's a lot of slides. I'll pause along the way.
Are you attributing these significant improvements to just adjusting to the new curriculum, or...
I think that is a major component of it, is having these rich resources that now allow us to meet a variety of needs in the classroom and are way more aligned to what the expectations are with respect to the standards that the kids are expected to meet. It's also attributed to the professional development that came with it. So, we invested a lot of dollars in professional development, in really getting to know what these standards expect and how to use these resources in relationship to the standards. So, I think it's a combination of training, hard work at the building level, and instructional supports, and then also the resources themselves. So, I think it's not any one factor. I think it's the combination of factors that has really allowed us to move as quickly as we have. Resources with no training, resources with no collaborative conversations around best instructional practices, aren't by themselves going to make students suddenly increase their performance. So, I think it's a combination of things.
If you had to rate the impact of training versus collaboration, which one would you put ahead of the other?
Training versus collaboration?
Yep.
Oh, I think collaboration is always going to top the scale, but you need the training to be able to collaborate.
Right.
So, I don't think it's like an either-or. If you don't get the training, you don't have much to talk about. You need to know what it is you're talking about in order to then collaborate. But what the collaboration does is, you take forward from the training and apply what it is that you've heard and you've learned, and you help to support each other's practices through that ongoing conversation. And I think that that's, you know, when you're in a school where you have people right next door to you, and you can do that every day, all day, it's a huge benefit. And when you're maybe sitting as a singleton in some cases, we have to make a lot of efforts to make sure that we can provide that, and we're learning that, and we're creating more of that. I know Mrs. Bryant's in the audience, and she's Google hangout...she's Googling this year and hanging out with some of the other teachers from the other schools, because we've recognized, Mr. Regan, what you're saying, that collaboration on top of training and support is a really critical piece of that puzzle.
Well, I suppose this is a good opportunity to mention that that was one of the changes that was made in the contract, was to increase our ability to collaborate.
So, we will have 12 opportunities, yes.
So, that's where things work.
Correct. And we're excited about that. We talked with the teachers the other day, a leadership team of teachers. We want to give that time to those collaborative conversations. That's why we asked for it. So, we're excited about that.
Can I ask a sort of boring structural question about the test?
Absolutely.
So, the first year was obviously totally different and many more days. So, the last three years, it was the same. When you say the content is the same, does that also mean the length and the amount of material? Or is it just the type of content?
Yeah. So, that's a very good question. We don't know yet.
Okay.
So, they haven't said if it's going to be three sessions, four sessions, 90 minutes, 75 minutes, but the items themselves...
The test items will be the same, but we don't know.
Correct. And the scaled scoring will remain the same.
Yes.
So, my guess is, items analysis, in terms of getting that scaled score, there will be...have to be a comparable number of items.
Yeah. I don't know how you could do that if it wasn't the same. Okay.
So, I'm making some assumptions based on what I know about what they're telling us about scoring.
Okay.
But those are questions that I've been trying to verify on a weekly basis.
Okay.
So, as I get information, I give it back out. That's a good question, though, Mrs. Kleber. The Illinois Science Assessment, it was initiated in 2017, and we administered it again last year to 5th and 8th graders. And in 5th grade, we had not yet made a full transition to the new science standards. We're piloting this year in several grade levels. So, we still saw an increase without a full transition to newly-aligned unit. So, we're holding our own considering we haven't fully aligned. So, I'm excited about that. That means there's only more room to grow. And as far as 8th grade, where we have fully implemented at the middle school, another curricular initiative, the iQuest curriculum, you see a very large jump for 8th graders from the year before. And now, we're fully implemented this year. The last set of units that we were on a three-year ease-in to full alignment, where this year now will be the first year of full alignment. So, very happy to see that growth. Okay. Moving into the MAP data, this is not something that's reported at the state level, but it is something that we like to utilize to triangulate our data and look at how our students can grow because of the adaptive nature of the assessment. As I...this is the same slide you saw last year in terms of status and growth, so we get metrics on the status of our students and how they compare from a norming perspective across districts that use this assessment. And then, we also get a growth metric, and the growth metrics take a student's baseline performance, the number of weeks of instruction that a student receives, and looks at how they grow over time. Typically, if you are above the 75th percentile in those status metrics, you are in that top quartile of districts that use the assessment. And the higher you are on that status line, the lower the growth target becomes, and sometimes, the more difficult it becomes to attain. So, a student at the very high end may only need to grow two or three points. That's a very targeted, small amount of growth, and you have to be really intentional in order to really move that needle. Typical performance, bell curve, our district performance, I've shared this before, we lay on the right side in terms of a typical student in our district. Our status percentile rankings, when you look at them, range from this year, even higher, the 85th to the 96th percentile as a status ranking. So, we start out incredibly high. But, even with that, I'm happy to share that we've also seen some success in our MAP growth. So, this first graph is a cohort of students, so you only see grades 3 through 8 reported because we don't have data for the 2nd graders, obviously. So, for the cohort from spring of 17 to spring to 18, 67% of the students met growth. So, 3rd graders and 2nd graders in spring of 17 to 3rd graders in spring of 18. For the general public, the gold diamond is your target, the middle of that diamond, if you were to draw a line across it. The blue bar shows where we are. Don't be alarmed by 6th grade, that's typical. The platform of the assessment changes, it becomes more complex. And so, when they norm it and apply the norms to a harder-level test from 5th to 6th, that's a typical gap that you see. So, don't get alarmed by that. So, then, I also like to always share the fall-to-spring data, which is a snapshot in a classroom year. And you see the one below is from last spring, 2017, 2018 is above it. You see that within the grade levels, those bars moved up. And so, in this graph, we had 68% of the students meet their growth within the school year, and that was up from 59% the year before and 55% the year before that. So, trending upward in the percentage of kids that are reaching those targets in both the cohort, as well as within a school year.
May I just secondly, a comment about the previous slide where you said, "Don't be alarmed about the 6th grade." I think...can't you make a stronger statement than what you made, which is that not only should we not be alarmed, but this is a good thing?
Yes.
Because actually, it's not the kids, it's the test.
It's the test, right.
Basically, if your students are stronger, it's more...the stronger the students, the stronger the school, the more it looks like it's misaligned. And it's not a problem with us, it's a problem with how they calibrate the test.
With how they calibrate the norms in 6th grade. And Dr. Miller, I appreciate that.
And if we're the other way around, we should be worried, basically.
Correct. Correct. And I appreciate you saying that. Okay. So, we'll look at reading, cohort growth in reading. Similarly, we saw some improvement there, 59% of the students meeting growth versus 56% the previous year. And then, in the grade level data, again, some areas of opportunity for sure, as we're making the transitions in reading. We're only in the second year of that curricular adoption as well, so I do expect that within MAP itself, that you'll see those increases also. And the comparison between MAP and PARK, and we talk about this a lot, PARK is much more rigorous and requires a lot of writing on behalf of the students, and MAP is much more procedural and multiple-choice. So, we look at it through different lenses in terms of where the kids are, but we do get some goal reporting out within the MAP data. And our biggest areas of opportunity within the MAP data tend to be in the vocabulary and word analysis area. So, we are looking at that, and that's part of the reason we adopted the new curriculum that we adopted. So, we're expecting to continue to see improved performance. But in this graph also, we had 62% of the students meet growth in a classroom year, whereas it was 55% the year before and 58% the year before that. So, again, still upward trends in terms of percentages of students, meaning their growth. Okay. Another segment of the work that we do is in our multi-tiered system of support program, formerly known as RTI, or Response to Intervention. This program, as we shared in the past, is really a diamond approach to supporting students who might need additional services, both with struggling, and also students who might need enrichment or advancement in their services. We have revamped our advanced learning program this past year and are implementing this year. So, next year, I will share some targeted data that is related to the advanced learning program. This year, I will report, as I did last year, on the struggling learner data. And what's...this data is always tricky to figure out the best way to share it with you, so I changed up the format, because it's a fluid system. So, students come in and out of these services throughout the school year. It's not a static group of children. And so, it's really hard for me to capture, to say to you, and graph students when students are moving in and out of services. So, what I tried to capture was that, this is...these are the amount of students that entered the program, here's how many we exited in the winter, here's how many entered that had not been receiving services in the winter, and then, what did we exit in the spring, and then, the total number that continued to head into the following school year. What's interesting about this is that in both ELA and Mathematics, ELA, 50% of that 143 students that started in services were at the lowest tier. So, when you look at exiting 48 students in winter, when 70 of those over 70-plus students were at the lower tier, that's a good chunk of kids that we were able to move forward. And in Mathematics, 27% of that 119 of those students were in the lowest tier in terms of intensive services. So, to be able to see this kind of growth in getting our numbers down, close, you know, close to half, or at least 40% down from where we're starting at the end of the year for kids we're taking in and out, we see that this is how we measure the success of our systems. We're seeing that we're making progress with these students. Some students move within a tier, so those kids that started out in that Tier 3, some of them moved to Tier 2 as well. So, they're not exited out, they're still in those numbers, but they've made progress through the tiers. This data is revisited at a school level, ongoing, in big, larger groups of teachers, looking at data every six weeks, but then, in smaller groups, every single day, just about, somebody's talking about data and students. And so, just kind of keep an eye on this to make sure that our systems are... Okay. Lastly, we're going to talk a little bit, before we get into the school report card, about our climate and culture data. So, this data comes from the Five Essentials survey that we did two years ago, and we...in 2016, and then, we did it again for 2018. So, we had a gap year in the data. So, in 2018, our schools in Riverside are considered well-organized for improvement on average. And actually, in each of the five areas that they measure, we had growth. So, in the ambitious instruction, which is in the center there, we went from more...what they have those levels on the side for the public, it says low, least, less, average, more, most. So, that's the continuum. We went from more to most in ambitious instruction. We went from a low average to a high average in effective leaders. We went from average to more in collaborative teachers. We went from more to the higher end of more in involved families, and we...same thing with supportive environment. We saw growth in all five. This graph represents on a scale of 1 to 99, it's not a percentile, it's just a straight metric, how that growth is looking. And so, in ambitious instruction, you can see we're now at 85 on that scale, 78 in involved families. And in the other three, those are the areas we're going to be focused on. So, Area 3, which is supportive environment, is student-reported at the middle school only, and that's at 66. That will be reported for 4th and 5th grade beginning this year. So, they're adding 4th and 5th graders to that mix. And then, teacher-reported data for collaborative teachers is at 60, and effective leaders is at 53, and that is teacher-reported also. So, moving...they've all moved up, but we continue to look to build capacity in those areas. We pulled out from the survey, there's a bunch of individual metrics within all of the various areas. So, we pulled out our top five that we know we've met with a lot of success on, and then, our bottom five, which we are looking to grow in. And so, of the many measures, the top five, math instruction showed up, classroom disruptions showed up as a strength, socialization of new teachers. The new teacher one is interesting, because that's up 50 points from 2015, but we didn't have a very strong mentoring and induction program. Four years ago, we really expanded it a great deal, and I think that's why that's showing up as such a big jump. Quality of student discussion and teacher-parent trust, those are our top five. And then, even though we have five lower areas, all of these actually grew. So, except for grit. Grit kind of stayed static, so we got to look at our grit, talk to our kids. Maybe they don't know what grit means when the questions are asked. But grit is somewhere...is somewhat static. But teacher-principals trust is up nine points from the previous time we administered this. Instructional leadership is up nine points from the previous time we administered this, and classroom rigor is up five points. So, we are seeing growth over the two-year administration. And now, we will be administering this annually as part of the state report card requirement.
What do you guys mean by classroom rigor? Because if math instruction's up, then classroom rigor's down.
So, classroom rigor is a student response. It's a student-reported. And it...so, I actually have the indicators here. I printed them, because I thought you might ask me some of those. So, in those questions, they get asked, do they connect what they're learning in school to their outside lives? Do they talk about different solutions or points of view? Do they encourage students to share ideas about things, different solutions? Students don't give up when they're, you know, when the work gets harder and requires them to explain. And that's their perception of how they're interacting. Any other questions on the other ones?
Who...since math instruction is student...student response, what are the other responses?
So, classroom disruptions are teacher-reported. Socialization of new teachers is a teacher-reported metric. Student discussion is a teacher-reported metric. Teacher-parent trust is a teacher-reported metric. Teacher-parent trust is a teacher-reported metric. Teacher-principal trust is a teacher-reported metric. Instructional leadership is a teacher-reported metric. And then grit is students and rigor is students.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. School report cards. So the state has released a whole new way to assess school achievement in the state of Illinois. They now have four designations that you see up there, exemplary, commendable, underperforming, lowest performing. The idea behind coming up with new metrics to designate schools is really connected to the new evidence-based funding model that the state has put into place. And they put schools into tiers based on these categories, and then funding is distributed to schools based on those tiers. So a lowest-performing school would be a tier-one school, a underperforming school would be a tier-two, et cetera, and funding gets allocated based on where you fall out. So given that, in general, that, that formula, what they did was they drew lines around where these categories fall out. So to be an exemplary school, only the top 10% of schools, based on all the metrics, could be exemplary. And they drew a line in the sand. And so to get into that top 10%, it's like everything we don't tell children, right? Like a bell curve, like we're going to draw the lines and that's where you sit, but that's what they did. And so the exemplary is the top 10%, and then the lowest performing is the bottom 10, and then everybody else is somewhere in between.
Can you specify the metric, top percent from what assessment? Mrs. Park?
Yeah, I'm going to go through that in a second. I have, it's actually a combination of metrics.
Yeah, I'd like to remind us of what the combination is.
Yep, and I'll get there in a second. So yep, I'm going to answer that. So here is the combination of the metrics. I, I gave you the 912 too, just so you could see it, the differences in the high school, in case some of you have high schoolers out there, and we also look to where our kids are growing at RB. And the K-8 band, 50% of the designated metric comes from student growth. So the way they calculate that is they're looking at a student score on PARK from one year to the next. They give the students a student growth percentile based on their scaled score change. And, and that's based on where students at that grade level across all students in the state performed. So you could, in theory, in growth, have a lower scaled score than the year before, but still be in the 50th percentile for growth. Because what it's looking at is all the average of fourth graders and where their scale score landed in comparison to where they were as third graders and where the scale score landed. And the test gets more rigorous and more difficult as you go to each grade level, so a lower scaled score will still end up with a positive growth metric. So it's just important to understand that that calculation is somewhat complicated and normed at each grade level. They do 25% ELA growth, 25% mathematics growth to come up with the 50% that represents the growth. The next biggest piece of that pie is actually a combination of chronic absenteeism, which that metric weighs in at 20% of your total index score. So all of this is translated into an index score. The math proficiency and ELA proficiency are 10% each for a total of 20% of the score, of the index score. And then if you have enough English language learners to be calculated, and in our case, only AIMS had enough students in that category to be measured, it's 5% of your index score. And if you do not have enough EL students in your school, they take that 5% and spread it out equally amongst all the other indicators, they divide it out. And then the last piece of the puzzle, which was not actually factored in this year, will be the Five Essentials survey, the climate survey. So next year, there will be an index point assigned to that 5%. This year, everybody got those five percentage points in their designation. So what does that mean for us? That means we ended up with five really high-performing designations. We have three schools that fell in the top 10% in the state as exemplary, two that were commendable, and the two that were commendable were less than four points away from the exemplary cut. So the exemplary index score cut was 80.9, and both schools that are commendable were less than four points from that cut. So very close. And so we're very, very proud to have five schools that are that high performing. When you think about that four points down, that's probably the top 15% of schools in terms of report card designations. So we're, we're really, really proud to have the growth, and the proficiency is what gets us here. Not that we don't have work to do, we still do, but we're excited about what we're seeing so far. And by the way, the English learner metric comes from what's called the ACCESS test, not PARK. So the English language learners take a separate assessment every January called ACCESS, and it gives a proficiency level of where they are with their English language acquisition, and that's the metric that they use for their measure. So I should clarify that.
Why is chronic, and this is obviously more of a state question, but why is chronic absenteeism given such weight?
Because the theory, the theory is if the students aren't in school, they cannot learn. And, and the more you're not present for instruction, the more that's going to impact your ability to learn and grow. So it's really, from my perspective, an incentivized, correct. And it's to get districts to figure out ways to get kids in school so they're available to learn.
It is really a large piece. I was just thinking, and this is an aside, we are, our numbers are not high, we don't hit that 10%, although if you notice, like Hauser hits 9%. And there's actually been a very specific strategy in place at Hauser this year, for those of you that might have students, perhaps a future education committee item, interesting to, to share that with the board about just really positive practices in place to really encourage kids to be getting to school on time, obviously getting to school, and so. I think it tends to be more of a high school problem, but there are districts that really have that as a problem. You know, younger kids do.
Right. So, and as we get, as we get into some of these indicators, we are doing great. I mean, we, we've made so much growth and there's so much celebration here. It doesn't mean we're done, and it doesn't mean we don't have pockets of places where we're doing work. So, you know, I think Mrs. Hefner said it best earlier this evening, when she talked to you, it's continuous improvement. We don't sit back and say we're done, ever. We know we have places where the data's not where we would want or expect it, and we know that we have places where it's what we expected, and we're excited about it. But every school, whether you're exemplary or commendable, has areas in their data to celebrate, and they have areas of data that are on our minds as concerns or challenges that we want to keep focusing on. So we would be foolish in any district, if we were supporting children, to say, "This is good enough." It's never good enough when you're working with kids, because there's always a student that you know you haven't reached yet. So as far as proficiency goes, this is where the metrics came from, is, and these are all on your school report cards, the percentages of students that were proficient in each of the areas. And you'll see some schools have opportunities in proficiency, and other schools have opportunities in growth, and the combined metrics get us where we want to be. Combining these district-wide, which is the dark blue bar, is where you saw that 64% on the very first slide I started with. So that's where the proficiency comes from. We know, I think I said already, things about collaboration and finding mechanisms to continuously have conversations about meeting the needs of all students and looking to continue to do that, to build capacity around proficiency across the district. I think that's something we're always working towards. But when you look at growth, you see a little bit more evenness across the bars in terms of how our kids are growing, so especially in comparison to the state metric. The proficiency for the school report card designation, that metric, is lower than where our students perform. So all of our schools got full credit for proficiency because the metric for that was not as high as where we already are. So, but to maintain things and to continue to improve, we want to go beyond where that metric is. And every year, that proficiency, proficiency metric goes up a little bit until 2032, when they want 90% of the students at proficiency, as far as the, every student succeeds act in Illinois. So while it's different from No Child Left Behind, it may be somewhat still similar.
It used to be 100%.
Right, so now we're down to 90. Progress. But the growth, you know, is, is 50%. So this is what weighed very heavily into the metrics for all schools' designations.
On the previous slide, one school in particular seems to stand out for both ELA and math.
And smaller numbers of students, it's a smaller school, it's a one-section school, it's not where we want it in terms of proficiency. We know that. We're working on finding ways and structures to continue to support all the schools. So some of it is, you know, more opportunities for collaboration, talking about pacing with other schools, that's one of the things Mrs. Bryan is doing, is she's talking regularly with the pacing of the larger schools to make sure that we're keeping pace at the same rate when you don't have someone next door telling you necessarily what to do or where they are on a daily basis. You know, we want to make sure we're moving kids through the curriculum at the same rates. It's also cohorts of kids, there's lots of different things that impact data, right? When you look at average scale scores, where students start versus where they need to get to, and that's why if you look at the growth too, in those two buildings, some, the growth in that building in mathematics is higher than some of the other schools. But that doesn't mean that's where we want it for proficiency. So we have to keep accelerating that growth to get the proficiency to where we want it. And then lastly, we want to talk about the big picture of student learning, because it goes well beyond test scores, and so I don't want to end with test scores because there are so many other things going on in our schools. We have incredible kids, we have a wonderful supportive community, we have wonderful staff, we have parent organizations that support a ton of what we do. And those two word bubbles, I think we shared them with you very early on in the air from Institute Day, were the things on the top, that what teachers said about our students, and at the bottom, about what teachers feel they bring to the classroom. And I think those are really important things to keep in mind, is that we are educating that whole child, and we're proud of that whole child approach that we have in District 96 and the work that we're doing with our kids. So where does that leave us? Strengths. We had a lot of growth in our achievement across the system in ELA and math. We definitely have shown that our curricular alignment has provided that foundation. Our MTSS system is continuing to support students who are struggling. We have improved climate and culture indicators across all five domains of Five Essentials. We still have opportunities. And with respect to the MAP assessment, we still want to work towards that increased percentage of students meeting growth and the growth percentile rankings, even though we saw great strides, I think that's, we're still wanting to aim for that top quartile. In the PARK testing, we're still looking at goal area opportunities. So for example, in mathematics, we've got now the major content strands down really strong, supporting content is something that we're now layering in. There's two areas within that assessment, there's your major content that you cover, and then some supporting content. We've really got the major things pretty solid, we're looking at the supporting pieces. Interestingly, modeling and reasoning in mathematics are two subsets of goal areas within the PARK assessment. We are very strong in modeling and reasoning in mathematics. And I attribute that, again, to the kinds of things we're asking kids to do in math. And then in Five Essentials, continue to focus on increasing, at least helping the students to, to perceive their instruction as rigorous, we definitely want that, and working on our instructional leadership at our building levels. So next steps, we definitely have a focused professional development plan on meeting the needs of all learners. We've dedicated some professional collaboration time to look at those best practices on instructional strategies for meeting diverse needs. We started our first two Institute Days focused on some of that. We continue to work on that in our after-school professional development time. We're continuing to focus on the district adopted shared use of the shared resources and the consistency of rigor and expectations across all our buildings in the use of those resources. We're analyzing assessment data on a regular basis. These instructional leaders that you have in this room, I must get at least a phone call a day, if not more, from a principal or two principals, asking me to dig into data with them at a different level, on a different metric, because they're constantly looking at how they can improve instruction in their buildings. And so they're constantly looking at how to align those goals and address those areas of opportunity across all of our measures. We also are really working hard at getting students to have some ownership in their learning and providing students with more specific feedback. We've had a big emphasis on formative assessments. I know Hauser, that's been a huge focus for them in terms of kids getting that feedback and really knowing what to do with it, intentional feedback to improve their learning. And then you've heard a lot about collaboration tonight, it's my new word in Stata Scaffolding, Mr. Skolnick. Increased cross-building collaboration to improve student learning and utilizing technology to do that, as well as implementing peer observations as an improvement strategy. So getting teachers into each other's classrooms more to see the instruction that's happening and learn from one another. That was a lot of information in a short amount of time, but again, I want to end by saying a ton of celebration, but a ton of work yet to be done, because it's, it never is. But I'm really proud of the team I work with. I'm just up here sharing the data, it's not just my data. We all own our data, and we own it together, and we spend a lot of time talking about it. And so I couldn't be prouder to work with this group and really have that collaborative spirit in helping each other learn and grow. I think we're very lucky to have that in District 96. I've seen cultures that are very competitive building to building, and I can say that this group of principals does not see it that way, and they see it as our collective responsibility to educate all our kids.
And I'll just, I'll echo, thank you, Merrill, for the presentation and for gathering a lot of information and a pretty succinct presentation, and just echo the same, that this is really an outstanding leadership team and outstanding group of teachers that work with our leaders. And I think at the beginning of the year, we talked about not saying yes, but to people, but saying yes, and to people. And I think in that yes, and, we've said, like, there, there's so much celebration, and yet I want to share with you, this is kind of a relentless, ever-digging, ever-pursuing, this is a gritty group, even if our students don't think they're as gritty, I would, I would give our district leaders absolute high marks in grit, and that we keep digging into the data. You know, Dan, you, you said, "What about this other building?" Not to call any buildings out specifically, but we do see that our smaller buildings have different proficiency levels, and we have asked ourselves questions, sort of inside-outside, turn the puzzle upside down, and, you know, we really do wonder if it's this collaborative piece, right? So one of the things we know about collaboration is it's not just having that opportunity to meet, but it's having that trust to really expose your strategies and what worked well for you and what didn't work well for you. And so how do we make sure that every single one of our teachers, all our third-grade teachers, all our fourth-grade teachers, every single grade level have those opportunities to have those very sort of trusted, insightful, professional growth opportunities to collaborate and connect? And so we know that we need to build those opportunities. We have a very unique model with our two small schools and then two larger elementary schools. We have the same high-quality resources in all of the buildings, we have offered the same high-quality professional development in all the buildings. Interesting, our demographics are pretty well matched, but we are really sort of turning the puzzle upside-down, inside-out, as I said, that are there other things? Are there some things with scheduling or structuring or how we allocate our support staff, et cetera, to these buildings that there's a way that we can get that growth to happen even faster? Because that's really our goal, is that we want all of our children at very high levels of proficiency, we want all our children growing and changing. I tend to, you know, when you talk about data, I always tell parents, the most important piece of data is the data about your own children that you eat dinner with every night, you know, that is the most important thing. But as a school district, we do look at this in aggregate, and then we look at it by building, we look at it by groups of children. As you, as the state has pointed out, we have to look at it by certain subgroups. So we are doing all of that, I just want to assure everybody, and I think they all know that, that this is, this is the work we do, this is the work that we signed up to do, that we know that there are very specific ways of how you look at these, these, all this great news, but also how we look at our problems. You know, what are the structures? What are the human resources? What are the instructional resources? What are the materials? So this is all, these are the layers and layers, I guess that's the other theme for tonight, along with collaboration, is that everything is kind of multi-layered and complex, and that little students don't come to us all the same, on the same day and in the same way, and that we have to have that, really, that wide range of supports too, because every child's different, and some children are going to grow a whole lot real fast, and others are going to need extra supports to do it, and sometimes children surprise us in all kinds of interesting ways. So really, but I, I think the most important message is that there's a lot of cause for celebration in this data, there is a lot of hard work that is behind this data. We thank parents for sending us really wonderful children, we thank our teachers for coming in every day, just ready to do this very, very important work. And certainly my greatest opportunity is to work with our leaders at the building and at the district level, and have just been doing, you know, what I call heavy lifting sort of every day.
And if we stay focused on the growth, the proficiency will also come, and the growth is showing.
So yeah, thanks for your comments, Martha, about, about the differences between the schools. I think that's a very important topic, and I, I agree with everything that's been said, and I think this is, this is a fantastic, fantastic achievement over the last three years. I mean, the grow, or the improvements in this, in the percentage of students that are now meeting expectations and exceeding is huge. I mean, it's objectively huge. You don't usually see that kind of improvement, so it's really, really good on a district level. And I think that the news is, is positive. And I think that the news is positive, you know, both in reading and math. But I think the one, the one concern that I do have is that there is, there is a, appears to be a divergence, as Dan kind of alluded to, between the performance of the larger schools and the smaller schools. And that the larger schools are doing sort of better and better, and the smaller schools are not. So, that's, to me, as a board member, I'm just looking here, is that that's where, if I'm looking at, you know, the big picture is really good, and the big picture at the Hauser and the, and the two big elementary schools is really, really strong in terms of proficiency, which I think for us, in my opinion, that's the thing that matters. What really matters is whether our kids come in in kindergarten, whether they leave in 8th grade, and they know what they have to know to do well in high school. Proficiency is, at the end of the day, you know, the most important thing. And I am concerned to see this divergence, and that's the, that's the only thing, I think, that sort of strikes me as being sort of a worry. And I'm wondering if that's something that, you know, we can, we can hear, you know, more about as the year goes on, rather than just waiting till next November to see, you know, what the results are, if there's something we can...
With respect to PARK, you'll have to wait until...
Well, obviously, right.
...that data. But I would tell you, like, you know, as you look at the map data, that we are seeing the growth, and you did see the growth in the PARK data in the smaller schools, while the proficiency is still not where it should be. The other thing you should know is I did pull the analysis at Hauser for all students, and there's, there's not a proportional discrepancy in how kids are leaving us as they move to RB. So, there's not, the kids who are not at proficiency in 8th grade aren't proportionately higher from the smaller schools versus the larger schools. So, as we get towards the end of, you know, you mentioned, like, setting them ready for high school, proportionately, and when you look at the Hauser data and the success at Hauser, the kids are leaving us well-prepared. That doesn't mean that we're not looking at this individually and looking at, you know, N of 20 students in a particular class in a small building and knowing who those students are. We know who every single one of them are. We know where they are, what their needs are, and in some cases, some of them did grow. They're not at proficiency, but they did grow in most, in a lot of those cases. And so, it's something we're going to continue to work toward, and you heard many of the structural things that we're doing. I mean, we have the map data. If I showed you the map data from last year, you would see those growth trajectories, you know, moving forward in those ways. We also have our curriculum-based assessments now that are aligned, and teachers are talking about those common assessments as well. They just analyzed student work two weeks ago as a total grade level team across the board at all buildings, to look at the actual work that the students are doing. So, that's where the barometer, I think, is a really healthy way to check in, is when you're looking at work across a grade level on the same assessment, from a programmatic standpoint, that they'll be able to look and see how their kids are progressing from a benchmark.
I have a question, or you probably don't know this better than I would, but how does proficiency is calculated? I'm just sort of wondering, because we're dealing, I mean, this concerns me, that smaller schools don't seem to be at the level of the bigger schools. Just wondering how the data is calculated, though, that if you have, like, if you have, like, five kids, say, who don't perform at grade level in the smaller schools, that's going to definitely skew everything bigger than the bigger schools.
Yeah, so, I did, you know, like, we talked about it, and could it go the other way, too, if you had 10 kids just above the cut? So, for example, in one of our schools, we had 10 students that were one question away, in one of the smaller schools, from proficiency, and it would have bolstered their percentage by 13%. I went and looked at the two larger schools for the same band of kids that were close to the proficiency cut, it would have bolstered their scores 2% to 3%. So, there is a percentage shift based on small numbers of students. That, that's just N of...
But that could go the other way.
Yeah, well, right, it could. Right. It could.
It also fell one point, so that's a little bit arbitrary.
I mean, you could, but if you were just looking across the board at those bands, to, to your point, in terms of small number versus large number of students, there is some of that.
I think there's a great deal to celebrate here, which is, you know, obviously, comments that have already been thrown out, and I'm happy there's such a great group of people here at our board meeting, which is normally a ghost town. But we've got, you know, we've got administrators, we've got principals, we've got teachers, we've got community members, and there's really fantastic progress here. But I also feel like, that I, for one, am not doing my job as a board member if we're not looking at how we can improve, how we can do better next time.
I don't think any of us feel, yeah.
And we don't want to, as a board member, I don't want to sit around here after the meeting and pat each other on the back and think, "Wow, we did great on this one, didn't we, guys?" We got to look at how we can do better.
Absolutely. I think, I think even if all our schools were exemplary, we would be doing that.
Absolutely.
That, that's how we want to move forward. That's how I'd suggest moving forward.
I'd like to see some updates during the year as well.
We can talk about what we can share.
Because I do think that all the schools, as Ms. Hefner in her introduction mentioned, all the schools are focused on the whole child, and they're all trying to do what's best. And maybe it is a structural issue, maybe it is something to do with the one section that makes it more difficult, you know, maybe than the bigger schools to achieve the more rapid progress. So, I really think that if we can fix that or figure out what's going on, you know, in the very short term, and which I have high confidence that you all will be able to do, and turn that around, I think then, I think that, you know, the overall picture is very, very good, and we could just, you know, maybe address that one thorny issue.
I think there's a lot of, but I think we will continue to look at the complexity of it. I don't think I can tell you it's any one, one element that, you know, other than, the collaboration, I think, is the one that I think we're going after right now in a really big way. But I think it's, you know, it's a multi-pronged thing, that we're going to have to look at all, a bunch of different things to continue to make sure that everyone's improving. And at our large schools, too, we still have room to grow there as well.
I have a question. Will this topic be added to, like, a DLT agenda?
It's every week.
Yeah, it's really an ongoing conversation.
It's a standing item.
And then, I work directly with the principals, Merrill works directly with the principals. It's actually part of their own professional goals. But I think in terms of, like, regular board update, Sherry, I would say, maybe, like, look to you as education committee chair, to, so that we kind of gauge over time how we want to continue to bring the topics forward.
Yeah, I just, Merrill, what is it that we can provide today? Is it an intervention approach or an update on what's happening with strategies or...
We can talk about the things, the strategies that we're implementing.
Yeah, I can think of a couple of different ways we can look at it, so...
Yeah, so we can think about how often, how often you guys would like to see it as well.
I guess, just to, just to reemphasize, is there a tendency to focus on problems? You can see, that's sort of the sort of human nature, like, oh, God, what's going on? But again, the overall message here is incredibly positive. And so, you guys, really, the administration, the staff, everyone needs to be commended for this huge increase in, in the learning that our kids are doing. So, that's the overall message.
Yeah, and I will, just, I'm going back to, you know, from a state perspective, in terms of those designations, in terms of that criteria. But when we're comparing with ourselves, it's different, because we have a different standard, because we're Riverside District 96. But in comparison to those designations and being in the top 15% of schools, every one of our schools, that's a pretty huge accomplishment.
I mean, we have a lot to celebrate.
Right. I agree.
Well, thank you. That was, as always, comprehensive.
Maybe too comprehensive. And anyone who has individual questions, I say this to the camera all the time, please call me. I talk to people all the time. My door's open if you want to understand and learn more. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Future meeting dates are November 21st. The regular business meeting is canceled. December 5th, committee of the whole, 7:00 p.m. at Ames. December 19th, regular business meeting, 7:00 p.m. at Hauser.